All right, calling this City Council on Planning and Zoning Commission Joint Special Meeting Agenda to Order, March 15, 2021, at 9:15 PM. With that, we'll move, call to the order, we have all members of the City Council have been present, let's see, currently have Member Orlando, Pro Tim Hernandez, Member Little, Member Owens, and Member Kamkar online. Two other members, Carbone and Perez, are outside the chamber right now, but I know they're in the building, so, but we're gonna get started, so we do have a quorum. Madam Chair, would you certify your quorum?
Yes, Mayor, Planning and Zoning Commission does a quorum, we're missing Commissioner Dansby and Commissioner Henricks, but there's, we still have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you, moving forward, have citizens' comments, did we receive any citizens' comments?
Mayor, we did have Mr. Jay Daggett, who did wanna make a comment, I'm not sure if he's online, and staff, see if he's...
Councilmember, I don't see him in the meeting.
Okay, he's the only person signed to have a general comment, Mayor, the rest of the speakers are associated with specific items.
All right, thank you, moving forward, introduction of the agenda and format of our meeting, staff?
Thank you, Mayor Cole, so, for tonight, we have a few conditional use permits to go through, we'll have called to order for each one, followed by staff report and presentation, and then applicants will have an opportunity to discuss their proposal, all by public comments, neither support or opposition to, and then council, commission, and staff will have their discussions, afterwards, the City Council will hold a separate vote on a resolution to either approve as requested, or approve the request as presented, approve it with conditions, deny the request, or to table the item to a future date. On the agenda, we have a machine shop, or a wood shop, on Garden Road, then we have a place of worship on Zapalac Road, liquor store at 8201 Broadway Street, then an animal hospital on North Main, restaurant on the Beltway, and then a radar tower located at 3849 Bailey Road, and then another liquor store on the other end of Broadway at 12568. So the, I just wanna share a quick outline for you, the purpose of the conditional use permit is really to measure and to look at the suitability of the use within the context of the surrounding area, sometimes we have zoning districts that allow for things that are, that may need a little bit of additional consideration, or for additional bufferings for nuisance abatement, or other issues that may pop up, that the public brings to our awareness and conscience, so that is why we are, or why we have these uses as conditional use permits, and keep in mind that they may not be necessarily a huge burden just for this site, but this site may have, or this zoning district may show up in other sites where it does become a bigger issue, so with that said, we will get into our first meeting, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, moving forward, Joint Special Meeting Number One, a request by Janelle Baker, applicant and owner for approval of a conditional use permit, CUP for metal machine or wood shop used, used located within the garden or day mixed-use district to accommodate a metal shop specializing in making custom furniture within the existing warehouse building on approximately 0.43 acres of land, that's the purpose of this meeting, move forward with our application information and case summary, staff report.
All right, thank you, Mayor, I will introduce Florence to deliver this first staff report, thank you.
Florence, it looks like you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're good.
All right, so, good evening again, Mayor, council members and the Planning and Zoning Commission, again, my name is Florence Buaku, with the Community Development Department, this request is for a conditional use permit for a metal machine and wood shop in the garden or day mixed-use district, the location is 2542 Garden Road, we sent out notices to property owners around the subject property, and we did not receive any comments in favor or against the proposed request. So the subject property is located within the garden or day mixed-use along Garden Road, it's zone garden or day mixed-use district, and it's the same for the underlying land use, the land use is garden or day mixed-use district, and this land use allows both commercial and residential property used to coexist in harmony with each other, the subject property has both residential and commercial uses on it, so the residential use is directly along garden or day mixed-use, and the commercial use is behind the residential use, if this conditional use permit is approved, the subject property will be subdivided, and the necessary screening and buffers will be provided to make the uses compatible with each other. So moving on, this is a look at the layout of the 4,500 square foot warehouse building together with the associated parking. And staff has reviewed this according to the criteria established in the UDC, and for conformity with the comprehensive plan, and we found that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the thoroughfare plan, and utilities available, the property is yet to be plotted, and so once it's plotted, the necessary dedications will be made for the expansion of garden or day road in future. And then again, we've reviewed this, looking at the conditions in the UDC for approving conditional use permit, it is, it meets all the requirements, once it's subdivided, the applicant will provide the necessary buffers, and so it would have features that minimize visual impact on adjacent properties, and so with that, staff recommends approval of the condition, of the requested conditional use permit, thank you, and this, and staff reports.
So that completes the staff report, moving forward to the applicant presentation, Ms. Baker, you've waited a long time tonight, move to you.
Good evening, thank you for having us, my husband and I purchased this property a couple months back, it was previously a piano shop, action piano was there, and previous to that, it was an antique shop, and we did purchase both the building that we're proposing to do our custom furniture business out of, as well as the house in front, so we do own both properties, so, we are looking at making custom furniture, we use substrates such as metal, wood, glass, granite, all the fun stuff.
Does that complete your staff, the applicant presentation?
I think so.
Okay, all right, we will move towards persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request? For a second time, anyone wishing to speak for or against the proposed request, did we have any online sign up for this one, Mayor Pro Tim?
No, Mayor.
And third and final time, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request, seeing none, we will move towards Planning Commission, staff, and City Council, Planning and Zoning Commission?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioners, if you have any questions or comments, please signify by raising your digital hand, so I can call on you. Mayor, I'm not seeing any questions or comments from the Commissioners, and I don't have any questions or comments either, I heard, I think, I wanted, let me take that back, Florence, did you say that the, once it's plotted, the necessary road widening could occur, is that what I heard you say?
Well, the property is along Garden Road, which is designated as a second thoroughfare to be expanded, and so once it's plotted, the necessary dedications for the future expansion of the road would be done.
Thanks, yeah. Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to make sure I heard what you said, I appreciate it, that's all, thank you, Mayor Cole.
All right, moving to City Council, anyone wishing to speak or have a discussion or question, I don't see none, and I don't see Councilmember Kamkar up on my screen, so I wanna make sure.
Just wanna say if it's approved, good luck.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I don't see Mr. Kamkar moving towards saying anything, so we'll move forward with our staff wrap-up?
Nothing additional at this time, Mayor.
All right, thank you, and we'll move to item C, City Council New Business, Member Orlando, would you put that on the table?
Sure, Mayor, let me wake up my iPad. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2021-CUP21-00007, so moved.
We have a motion and a second, any additional staff report? With that, any other questions or comments from council, seeing none, Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt Resolution R2021-CUP21-00007.
All right, congratulations, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving towards Joint Special Meeting Number Two, a request by Scott Short, applicant on behalf of Robin Z, excuse me, Robin D Zapalac owner, approval of conditional use permit for church, temple, or place of worship within the single-family district R1, to accommodate the development of a 3,000 square foot church on approximately 4.99 acres, with that, we'll move towards staff report.
Mayor, this staff report will be delivered by Mohammed, take it away, sir.
Thank you, sir, so this is a request for approval of conditional use permit for a church and related services on single-family residential R1, and it's five acres, next to slide, the applicant is seeking really to purchase the subject property and develop it into a church with related services, location is 2539 Zapalac Road, this slide is zoning map, and it shows the property zone R1, next to slot, Martin, this is the future land use plan, and it has the property designated as business, commercial, next to slide, this is a survey, and it kinda shows existing condition of the property, there's an existing house, about 4,000 square foot house located towards the north right corner of the screen there, and, and there's also a pond there, next to slot, Martin, this is the proposed site plan, again, it's for the development of a 3,000 square foot church building with parking, and, next to slide, this is just a rendering of the building that's trying to put on the property with the floor plan of the sanctuary, next to slide, Martin, so, this is the conformity metrics, and again, the only issue with this request is Zapalac Road is an improved local road, and the pavement portion is only just about wide enough to accommodate just one way, and so the applicant has been informed about that issue, and that it really just need to be widened to accommodate future traffic as this church is being built, other than that, the property is not plotted, will have to be plotted in conjunction with any development on the site, next to slide, this is the approval criteria from the UDC, the request meet at least four of the approval criteria, again, one of them related just to, that, you know, not incorporating any features that will deal with, it's really just related to traffic and mitigation of traffic and things like that, and then the property is just its own residential, and so the proposed use is really not consistent with that zoning, so, staff recommends approval, Martin, next to slide, staff recommends approval of this request, which is just one condition, that this portion of Zapalac Road that will serve this property will have to be bliding in conjunction with the future development of the property to accommodate any future traffic that will be generated by the church, that's all I have, back to you, Martin.
Nothing additional to add on this, just, the only thing that I would add is that this is a proposed condition within the resolution.
One thing that I also wanna add, that we have not received any correspondence, we have not received any public comments on this request, thank you.
Does that complete the staff report?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
All right, is the applicant present or online?
Hi, yes, my name is Angie Mewatt, and I represent St. Catherine's, who's purchasing the property of Zapalac, the church has no problem expanding the road, we were just wanting to know how much we needed to expand it, but the church is willing to expand it as accordance to the parland planning zones.
Is that your, complete the applicant presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, moving forward, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed Second time, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request? And third and final time, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request? Seeing none, we'll move to item B, Planning Commission Council Staff Discussion, moving to Ms. Kay and your team, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor Cole, Commissioners, does anybody have questions or comments? Please signify by raising your digital hand. Seeing none, Mayor, I will give it back to you, thank you.
Thank you, moving to City Council, I see Mr. Kamkar unmuted.
This is for the staff, this site is just big enough to probably have more development, what is a footprint of the church right now, in terms of the five acres?
So the proposal right now is just for the 3,000 square foot residence to change the use of that residence into the church, we have had a pre-development with them where we discussed potential expansions in the future, but they don't have any immediate plans for outside of the property as it currently stands.
All right, it's clear there's a big deal more or less behind there, where does their, where does their off-site sheet flow go right now, does it go to Zapalac, or does it go to their tract, that's my only concern, is this, this has just enough, a big enough footprint, but that may be an ongoing concern.
Mr. Kamkar, I don't have the immediate answer for the, how it flows based on the topo, but I can tell you that during the change of use and their drainage analysis, they will have to provide plans indicating such, so that is something that we'll take care of during the commercial permitting phase.
All right, those are my questions, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, any other members of the council have questions, comments?
The only thing I would say is, I think, I think it's commendable that the church is willing to look at rebuilding Zapalac Road, but I would struggle to say that maybe they don't realize how expensive that's gonna be, because you gotta tear out the whole road and start over, you know, I would like, again, this is not, this is not really a planning condition, but I'd like to see if we can find a way to work with them to see if there's a prorata share, or some other solution, the road can't go through, because it runs right into the cemetery, so we're not gonna have a whole lot of traffic on here, you know, maybe there's a, maybe there's a condition on the CUP where we allow them to, or require them to have traffic control measures in place, like a uniformed police officer that helps traffic in and out, as opposed to trying to get them to expand the road, frankly, the road's gonna cost probably more than double their building, it's just not gonna be, it's not gonna be affordable, I don't think, we've run into this on Zapalac several times, we've had more people, that several people interested in the development, and then when we tell them, hey, do something with this road, they don't, there's no, there's no money for it, not, not in a tract this size for these type of developments, so, I'd like us to see if there's something we can do, just because this is essentially a dead-end road, you know, just, you know, if we're, if we can be creative, otherwise, we've just rendered the tract undevelopable, we've zoned it as green space, if we, if we need to, if we force somebody to take this old road that they didn't have anything to do with, and try and make it a 28, 20, or 26-foot wide road, I just don't think there's gonna be a solution there, so, and I'm for the, I'm for the CUP, but I'd like, I'd like to see if planning and engineering can maybe come up with an alternative, that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll move towards staff wrap-up?
Thank you, Mayor Cole, having a quick sidebar conversation with engineering, we may be able to find a difference in asphalt versus concrete, and taking it to a minimum width instead of our normal wider cross-sections, that's something that we'll have to look into further, as, you know, we're mainly looking at this through the eyes of needing to have safety, or minimum safety standards, since we are increasing the number of people that will be going to that site, as Robert is texting me, we could probably handle that through a variance, so there's likely to have some solution within our proposed recommendation. With that said, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, moving to item C, City Council New Business, Councilmember Carbone, would you place that on the table?
Thank you, Mayor, consideration possible action resolution R2020-CUP21-00005, so moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, would you?
Just to clarify, as the proposed resolution includes staff's recommendation?
Yes, it does, sir.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions or comments, Madam, would you please call for the vote?
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Member Orlando has left the chamber.
The motion carries six to zero to adopt Resolution R2020-CUP21-00005.
All right, thank you, moving forward, item number, joint special meeting number three, request by Carlos Benavides, applicant on behalf of Pear Orchard Holdings LLC, owner for an approval of a conditional use permit for a retail store located within the general business district to accommodate a liquor retail store within a 1,200 square foot lease space within an existing shopping center on 6.50 acres of land, with that, we'll move to staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, with that... Thank you, Mayor. With that, I will introduce Samin Bezargian, one of our planners, to provide the staff report. Samin, it's your, your floor.
Thank you. Can you hear me? So, thank you, Mayor, City Council, and Planning and Zoning Members. So the next CUP case is for a liquor and packages for within an existing lease space in a shopping center in general business zoning district. The property is located at 8201 Broadway. It's along Broadway and close to the corner of Coen and Broadway. So far, the city has not received any comment on letter in favor or against of the proposed CUP. As you can see, this is the zoning and aerial map of the property shown located within an existing shopping center, and it's surrounded by general commercial and general business zone district. Next one is the map of the future land use. And it shows that the property is in business commercial, future land use, which is consistent with the proposed use as CUP. And next one is the interior site plan of the proposed liquor store. And next one shows the existing liquor stores within one and two miles of the subject property. So the proposed CUP for a liquor store is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future values plan, as you see. The Broadway, the property is facing Broadway, and part of Broadway has sufficient width. There's not going to be any significant changes to the building. So it's not going to be, it's not impacting the traffic. The property has been plotted and has access to utilities. So the proposed CUP for liquor store meets all the criteria of approval for a conditional use permit. So therefore, the staff recommends approval of the CUP request in general business zone districts. And that finishes the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We'll move forward to our applicant presentation. The applicant is present.
Bear with me, this is my first time here. I'm a little nervous.
Doing well.
My name is Carlos Benavides. As stated earlier, recent graduate from the University of Houston, just trying to start my first business. Ideally, I'm just trying to start a, something that isn't run-of-the-mill liquor store-wise. Liquor stores are very in-and-out, grab your stuff and leave, right? I want a more, more hands-on approach, more inviting atmosphere. I'm naming it the Art of Liquor. I want to make it very, walk in and look sort of like an art exhibit. You're, you feel welcome, you know? I was in college for quite a while, so I've got quite a decent experience alcohol-wise. And I've learned a lot of things research-wise, so like recommendations and things of that sort. I would definitely be your guy. I've also got the, all of the TABC permits for distribution. If you say you own a restaurant near or another business that would need some liquor, I would definitely be available to transport, sell you that and transport that. I've also got the tasting permit, so I would like to have tastings on site. Just want to make it real inviting to people because, I mean, even the bigger chains are real in and out. You know, they'll, they'll have their, their small event and, you know, it won't be personal, you know? One thing I'd like to touch on, just in the store in general, is that if you go to a Total Wine or Speck's, you'll get a, you go in and you ask for something rare, like, for example, hey, I'd like a bottle of Blantons. And the first thing they'll tell you is, hey, you've got to get on this list. How many people are on this list? 250 people. Then two or three years later pass by and you still haven't gotten a bottle from Total Wine or Speck's. That's something that I look to, you know, change. I want to make it a lot easier to get, you know, these harder-to-find bottles and just make people feel that I'm putting in the effort, you know, so they can come back. I just want to give it that. Thank you.
Thank you. You did well.
I appreciate that.
Moving forward, item number three, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request? Second, second time persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request? And for the third and final time, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request? Seeing none, we'll move forward in the agenda. Item number B, Planning Commission Council and Staff Discussion. Madam Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, does anyone, Commissioner Puertas, go ahead?
Yeah, I thought the applicant, applicant did a great job. First time, I know how nervous it can be. My only concern, and again, this, I don't know that the city's in the, in the business of picking winners and losers. But the shopping center next to this one, we just passed a liquor store. Different, the applicant has done a great job distinguishing his from others. But just, just to remind everyone, and I think later we'll hear the same thing in a spot just south of Shadow Creek on Kingsley and Broadway, again, an adjacent similar use. So just wanted to put that out there. That's all. Thank you.
Commissioners, anyone else have questions or comments for the applicant? For staff? Hearing none. Mayor, I don't, I don't have any either. So back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, City Council, any comments or questions, discussion? Councilmember Owens?
No, 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 no. Do you own any other liquor stores?
No, this would be my first liquor store.
Huh? This is your first one? Okay.
I do, I do have a restaurant, maybe half a mile away from it, right down Broadway. Yeah, one light away from Broadway.
Okay, and we got how many within a mile? Was it three? It looks like three glasses there on the zone, so.
I think where it shows two, right next to it, there's only one. There's the one that went in last month. The red dot across the street.
Well, I, this is no reference against you or what, but I've voted against them and, and I will continue to do that. I think we've got plenty of them here in Pearland. Scattered up and down through here, and some of them are going out of business as a, you know, they told us, like, in the beginning, it was like a gold rush to open these up. And now I think it's another rush to start closing them down. There's a couple here on Broadway that they're going to start closing down. I guess it's because, I guess the other big liquor stores came in and it's hard to compete with them. And so they just keep taking the price down until others can't make it and can't sell it, you know, or that. So that's something I guess you took into consideration. But so just to let you know, I'll be voting against it, but I'm sure the rest of them will vote for it, so.
Any other questions or comments? I will ask this. Josh, you just sent me a note that we had somebody raising their hand online. We, we didn't get speaker, did we get, we didn't get any other speaker forms on this particular one. If you're going to be online, I think you have to be able to do it. So did they raise their hand before I moved to council on planning and zoning?
That, I'm not 100% sure. The, it's Cameron Bausch. Do you have any contact information or receive any speaker information for them? Okay.
No. Okay, so we'll continue moving forward. I just, I wanted to make sure if we, if I missed somebody, but.
I'd just like to say good luck. I'm a free market person. They'll cancel each other out if there's too many of them. I admire your entrepreneurial spirit at such a young age. Good luck.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Councilmember Cam Carr, are you unmuted?
Yes, what is the restaurant that this Mr. Benavides owns or manages?
Las Americas, Mexican restaurant.
Mr. Benavides, if you want to give back to the liquor, I'm not here to stop you.
Yeah, I just want to quickly add, putting down, we talk about stuff like this a lot, just putting a goalpost down. Liquor stores can, and as member Owen said, do go out of businesses all the time. You take the liquor off the shelves, you put any other product up on the shelves. It's really easy to do versus a gas station or some of the other things we talk about. So unless we want to have a Soviet Central Planning Committee on booze, I think we are good to go with this. Thank you.
Sure, you've done your research and feel that you can compete and you've tried to illustrate that you're trying to differentiate yourself in the market. So I've got to issue to member Orlando's point, you know, it's easy liquor store. You're in 1,200 square feet, so, I mean, it's not going to be difficult to find something, you know, if you do fail, but I hope you don't. I hope you succeed. And it looks like you are Pearland resident as well?
Yes.
So you're local business owner. Yeah, I'll vote for this and wish you luck.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move towards staff report.
Nothing additional, Mayor.
Anything?
Nothing additional, Mayor.
No further.
Okay, all right, thank you. Moving to item C, City Council New Business. Mayor Proten, would you place that on the agenda, please?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2021-TUP 21-00001, so moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
No.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone? Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one to adopt Resolution R 2021-CUP 21-00001.
All right, Mr. Benavides, we wish you well.
Thank you so much. Hello, good evening.
Good job. Moving forward, Joint Special Meeting Number Four, Request by Kerry Sheldon, Hound Design Group, applicant on behalf of Chris Scheffler, doctor, owner, for approval for a conditional use permit for pet care facility, animal kennel with indoor pens located within the general commercial district to accommodate an expansion of the existing animal hospital, including outdoor pens on 0.9635 acres of land. With that, we'll move to staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. I will take this time to introduce Florence to deliver the staff report. Take it away, Florence.
Thank you, Martin. So this is a proposal for an expansion to an existing animal hospital. The location is 1601 North Main Street. This place has been operating as an animal hospital for a long time. They are looking to add a new building to the existing one for the expansion of the animal hospital. And they are looking to add a dog run. And so the only reason why this is here for the conditional use permit is the dog run portion of the expansion of the animal hospital. We have not received any comment for or against the proposed request. The subject property has a feature land use of industrial. It is zone general commercial, and it's surrounded by industrial uses on three sites, two sites, and then it's also surrounded by some vacant parcels on the rest, on the other side. And so this is a site plan showing the existing building in gray. The proposed building is in blue. The dog run is going to be right to the east of the proposed building, just in between the parking lot and, which is shown in pink, and the proposed building. So this is a view of the existing property to the top left corner. It's a building that would be demolished to make room for the expansion of the animal hospital, and the rest of the views show existing conditions around the animal hospital, which is the, which are the industrial uses surrounding the existing animal hospital. Again, this is the view of the existing animal hospital. The applicant did get a variance at the beginning of the month from the ZBA or the zoning board of adjustments for existing non-conformities with the building itself. And so that has been cleared, and so the CUP is what will clear them for building permits, which is the next stage. So staff has reviewed this application and has determined that it does meet the basic review criteria for a conditional use permit. And then staff has also reviewed it according to the criteria outlined in the UDC for approving conditional use permit. Staff believes that it meets all the criteria and just the location of the dog run is enough to prevent any direct nuisance to adjacent properties. And so based on that, staff is recommending approval of the conditional experiment as requested. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move towards applicant presentation. Good to see you, Doc.
Good evening. Chris Scheffler, 1601 North Main Pearland Animal Hospital. Thank you to the council and for planning and zoning and for all the staff that are here tonight at this late hour. I think we're approached 10:00 PM. So I just wanted to be here to answer any questions. I think that Florence's presentation was to the point. The thing that triggered the need for the CUP is the fact that we're going to have animal pens. If you're not familiar with our property, we've had animal pens since 1968. But here we go, you know, expanding and trying to improve the amount of taxable revenue to the city of Pearland. So now we need a conditional use permit to do that. So I'd be happy to field any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you. We'll get to questions in just a second, Doc, so if we have any at all. So with that, we will move towards persons wishing to speak for or against. Did we receive anything online for this one?
No, Mayor.
All right. So persons wishing to speak for or against proposed request? Seeing none, second, persons wishing to speak for or against this proposed request? And third and final time, persons wishing to speak for or against proposed request? Seeing none, we'll move to Planning Commission and Council and Staff Discussion. Madam Chairwoman, Planning and Zoning Commission, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, does any, does anybody have questions or comments for the applicant or for staff? Seeing none. Mayor, I don't have any. I'm, I'm, I think this is, this is easy for, for me. There's no, no residents, no residents around there, and I, I think this is a, this is a good thing. Like he said, it's revenue for the city, so it's cut and dry for, as far as I can tell. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move forward. City Council, any members of the council have a question, comment?
I would just say Dr. Scheffler does a lot of great work in our city, not just for our own animal shelter at the city of Pearland, but also in Pearland ISD, and I'm glad he's expanding and doing great stuff, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Say, just be honest, you were, made that comment about taxable value, you've Say, just be honest, you were, made that comment about taxable value to the ISD, not to the city. We all know.
But I, I know, I can't serve two masters, so sorry.
Thanks for being here. Thanks for everything you do for the community.
So with that, we'll move to staff wrap up.
Miracle, nothing additional.
All right, good deal. We'll move to item C, City Council, new business. Mr. Cam Carr, would you place that on the table?
Uh, consideration, excuse me, consideration of possible action resolution number R2021-CUP21-00002.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments from council? You what? Mr. Cam Carr, did you make the motion? Did you say so moved?
I can do that again. I, I made it. It's 10 o'clock, so hard to remember.
We just didn't hear it on this end.
For the purposes during.
Aaron, for the purposes, are we good?
If he said so moved, Councilmember Cam Carr, if you could just reflect that for the minutes.
Yeah, let me just run that back here. Consideration of possible action resolution number R2021-CUP21-0002, so moved.
Second. There we go. We have a motion and a second. No big deal. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution R2021-CUP21-00002.
Congratulations, Dr. Scheffler.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmen. Thanks, commissioners. Appreciate it.
All right, with that, we'll move to joint special meeting number five, a request by Sine Tate, Road Table applicant on behalf of Sherjet Singh, owner, for the, for approval of a conditional use permit for a restaurant with no drive-in or drive-through service with the light industrial M1 district to accommodate a restaurant with no drive-through service within a 1,512 square foot space within an existing retail building located on 1.9755 acres of land. And apologize if I butchered anybody's name with that. We'll move to staff report.
Your mayor. With this item, we will have Samin deliver the staff report. Samin, take it away.
Hello. Thank you. So the next CUP is for a restaurant with no drive-to in an existing vacant lease space in a retail space of a property which is in light industrial zone district. The property is at the corner of Sam Houston East Toll Road and sorry, Tom. Yes, and forgot the name of this. So the, yeah, 2944 Sam Houston Tollway. So far, the staff has not received any written or phone calls in favor or against the proposed CUP. So the next slide shows the zoning and aerial map of the property showing that it's in light industrial zone district, close to a general commercial. North part of the property is, you know, it is outside city limit and south is, you know, ETJ. This is a plot of the property. And then the next one shows the future land use map that it shows the property is in light industrial zone district, future land use. Next one shows the site plan of the property. And as you can see, the proposed restaurant is an existing space. So it's not going to be significant changes to the existing building retail. This is a store, a convenience store. So there's, there's no drive-through and, and the building is an existing structure. The proposed CUP is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, future land use plan. The property is along Sam Houston Toll Road and there is sufficient width. There's not going to be any changes to the structure. So there's no significant changes as far as, you know, traffic. The property has been plotted and has access to city utilities. Go to the next slide, please. The proposed CUP is in compliance with the approval criteria as far as the comprehen- plans, even by development code and all the listed criteria. Therefore, the staff recommends approval of the CUP request for a restaurant with no drive-to in light industrial zone district. And that completes the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move forward to applicant presentation. Is the applicant present or online?
I have the applicant online, Mayor.
Say again?
I think the applicant indicated they were online tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, there we go.
I think this is.
Welcome.
I'm Sine Tate. So basically, I'm just here today to see if I could be granted my CUP for the second time. The previous tenant actually had one already, but it had expired. So basically, that's all I'm trying to do is get granted the CUP.
Get it re-upped. I get it. All right, well.
The pre, the previous person had one already, but it had expired by time, by time I had purchased the property. So I had to reapply in order to start my interior build out. So I'm a little nervous, so.
Oh, don't be. I think you're good. Doing well. We'll move forward to persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. Again, second, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. And for the third and final time, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. All right, moving forward in the agenda for planning, commission, council, and staff discussion. Madam Chairwoman, Planning and Zoning Commission, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners? Questions or comments? Please raise your digital hand. Seeing none, Mayor, I'm going to send it back to you. I don't have any other. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the council, do you have any questions or comments?
What kind of restaurant is this going to be?
It's going, it's going to be a Cajun restaurant. I'm not sure as far as like liquor right now in the future. I'm looking for maybe like a small bar. But for starters, it's going to be mainly food. I actually do catering and I had a food truck for two years. So I just want to basically expand.
Okay. Well, I wish you luck. I, I don't have any problem with it. You're welcome.
All good. Any other city council comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll move to staff wrap up.
Thank you, Mayor. The only wrap up that I'd like to give is to provide a little additional information on the previous conditional use permit. The conditional use permit allowed for the previous person and tenant to conduct the build out of that leased space. They got approved previously. It just never happened. We looked to try to find a way to play the numbers game to be able to allow this to move forward without revisiting council for another consideration. But no, no matter how we looked to base those dates and times, it, it ran the clock and had to come back for council consideration. With that said, we'll deliver it back to you.
All right, thank you. We'll move forward. Item C, City Council, new business. Member Little, would you place that on the table?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R2020-CUP20-00026, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments from council?
Just that we've been here since six and this is making me really hungry having to talk about Cajun food.
Cajun food, I know. All right, with that, Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution R2020-CUP20-00026.
Good deal, Ms. Tate. Congratulations. We look forward to moving forward, joint special meeting number six, request by Samantha Peters, Harrison Cornberg Architects applicant on behalf of Larry Berger, Pearland Independent School District owner, for approval of additional use permit, CUP for radio or television or microwave towers, commercial within the single-family residential R12 district to accommodate the installation of a short-term 18 to 24-month or less research-grade weather station consisting of two radars on the vacant parcel east of the Pearland Recreation Center and Aditorium on approximately 61.154 acres. With that, we'll move to staff report.
Your mayor, again, I will turn this one over to Samin to deliver the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. So the next CUP is for radio. So it was originally for two radar towers and they changed it to only one. So the proposed radar is in a vacant lot next to Pearland Recreational Center. And it will be a temporary installation of one tower for purpose of weather research. So, so far, CD has received four written comments or phone calls requiring questions or an objection with the proposed CUP. If we can go to the next, thank you. So this one shows the zoning and aerial map of the subject property showing that it's a it's within residential SR12 and it's surrounded with residential zone districts. And if we can go to the next slide, please. And this is a plan of the proposed tower. And as you can see, it's going to be in a vacant lot. And this one shows the future land use map of the property that shows that it's going to be located in public semi-public zone district. So the proposed CUP is in compliance with comprehensive plan, future land use plan. As you saw, it's in, it's going to be in as public semi-public zone district, which is for government and institutional organizations. And as I mentioned, this is just a temporary, about 18 months up to 24 months installation. The property is along Bay, which this part of Bay has sufficient width. And the property has been plotted to see is in all the listed area for approval, including a UDC, a comprehensive plan, traffic control, also planned. And if we can go to the next slide, that would be great. Thank you. So staff recommends approval of proposed use, the CUP request in SR12 district. And that completes the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward to applicant presentation.
Thank you for having me this evening. My name is James Flynn. I'm a research associate professor at the University of Houston. This is a project that I'm working on with the Department of Energy. We've retained Harrison Cornberg Architects as our design team for this project. This is part of a larger Department of Energy program called Tracer, the Tracking Aerosol Convection Interactions Experiment. Ultimately, we're looking at how thunderstorm activity in the Houston area might be somewhat changed by other natural or human caused activities. Some of the fine particles and things that come out of the air from just the normal things that we do in our daily life, but also things that come out of the trees and the sea spray off of the ocean, things like this. We all know, living here in this area, thunderstorms, we know when we might have them, but sometimes we don't necessarily know how intense they might be. And that can lead to either missed forecasts of flooding events, or sometimes we forecast flooding and things get canceled. And then the flooding doesn't happen and that's another economic hit. So the ultimate goal for this project then is to help improve the forecast abilities in the Houston area and beyond. This is in conjunction with the National Weather Service. So the data that comes off of this will be shared with them in real time. Right now, we're looking at, as we said, a temporary use. The equipment will be brought in, in, I believe, late July, early August of this year. And we'll be packing up and heading out in October of 2022 at this point. This is the core of this larger project that's bringing in researchers funded by National Science Foundation, NASA. There's some international partners and a list of academic partners. It's too long to run through this evening. So this is our request to help locate this radar station here in the central area so that we can cover Houston. We can cover the bay and we can see what's coming in off of the Gulf as well. So this is a very unique situation for us. And being on the, the ISD property, we're also have been reaching out with, to Turner High School. And once the COVID situation kind of settles down, we look forward to bringing some of the students over and doing some outreach with them. This is a bit of a weird request, I guess, not one that you get every day. So I'm here to answer what questions I might be able to help with.
All right, good deal. Does that complete your presentation?
Yes, it completes my session.
All right. Next, we'll be moving to persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. We did receive several, actually received several comments online against or had questions. And then we had some speaker forums. First one here that I have is Brandy Turner. Is she online, Josh?
Brandy, you've been unmuted.
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Hi, I just want to say thank you all first and foremost for allowing me to speak. My name is Brandy Turner Smith. I live on Little Born Lane, which is directly behind the projected site. Just had a few things that the neighbors and I have kind of thrown around and talked about. I, first off, couldn't really find a whole lot of information conclusively stating that there's zero kind of effect of this type of, I know it's very, it's not ionizing radiation, but I still, the thought of it being in my backyard where my children play, just kind of raises a little bit of a red flag for me. I was born and raised in Brio. I've been through a lawsuit. I don't want to go through that again. I have health effects because of it and I don't want that to happen to my children. Also, I am also concerned with the projected home lowering. I mean, it could lower the value of our homes. If you look at any research and If you look at any research and see what other realtors have said, people don't want to buy homes close to any type of radar, cell phone tower, anything. You can check any of the research they've done and look at any of the polls that have happened. People don't want to buy homes close to that. They just don't. Can't say I blame them. I'm also worried about any type of noise that would come off of that. I don't know if there's any type of low-frequency type hissing or buzzing and what that would sound like, because that's, that's our backyard. It's right there. And like I said, that's where our children are. We also wonder if this really is going to be short-term, because that's a lot of money and equipment. And would the lease just be extended from there? Would it just continue to be extended? Because that's, that's a lot of money. And lastly, we're wondering, you know, if this does go through, is everything going to be returned back to its normal state? As there's still going to be roads and leftover items from this project? So that's, that's where I stand. I want to say that I'm a huge weather nerd. I support the research. I just not on board with it being in my backyard. And historically, these are placed out on weather radar towers next to, sorry, airports. So that's historically where these kind of weather radars go. And that's all that I have, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. We'll move to, is Charles Jarvis online? When we, Mr. Flynn, we'll, we'll take these questions up here, and when we get to the next item where we can discuss, we'll kick these questions back to you, okay?
Great, thank you.
All right.
Is staff able to project the timer also?
Give me just a moment.
Okay. Thank you.
And Josh, is, is Mr. Jarvis online?
I am here. I'm actually part of the design team, as part of one of Harrison Cornberg's subconsultants, here to answer, assist and answer any questions that Dr. Flynn might be asked.
Okay. Good deal.
No personal comments from him.
Okay. Thank you. Was there other that wanted to speak in favor or against on the?
No, Mayor. You, I gave you all the ones that we had, and it looks like they rest are with the applicant.
Yeah, the only other thing we received online was from Mr. and Mrs. Wilkinson, Jason Scherer, and Evelyn Peters. They weren't, they didn't have speakers forums. I just want to make sure if they're online or not. Okay. So with that, we'll move to anybody else in the chambers wishing to speak for or against the proposed request?
Mayor, just so she knows, because you didn't mention her name, just so if she's watching, she knows Mrs. Catherine Tiro as well. We have her letter.
Apologies.
Martin, mute yourself.
Second time through, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. And third and final time, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. Seeing none, we will move to Planning and Zoning Commission, Council, and Staff for Discussion. Madam Chairwoman, we'll turn it to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor Cole. Commissioners, does anybody have questions or comments on this item? I'm not seeing any hands raised. The first thing I thought when I read this was, was a way to ensure that it would be temporary and wondering if there was a way to include that. Because I, I agree with what the resident said. No one's going to want that in their, in their backyard for, forever. So while this might be helpful and be good research, and if it's temporary, that, you know, it might be bearable for the residents, is there a way to include that to ensure that it is indeed temporary? And did, was, did the, was the exact size of this? This thing mentioned? This apparatus, for lack of a better word?
We'll get information.
Any, what's your question?
What was the, the size of the apparatus that?
Size?
Tall?
Yeah, how tall? That, that, that's really what I wanted to know.
Flynn, how tall is it?
It's going to be about twenty-five feet tall. It's essentially four shipping containers that come together to make a cross, and then there's basically like the radar golf ball, the radon that sits on top of that intersection. And the, the sphere itself is about fifteen feet tall, so it's about eight foot for the container and fifteen for that, plus some fudge for getting us level and everything like that. So about twenty-five.
Are there, is it lit up, or is it just?
Not other than just walkway lighting, you know, for people being able to come in and out. There's no like security lighting or, or light towers or anything like that. And it's definitely below any height that would have to be marked for aircraft or anything. And as far as the, I don't know if I want, you want me to continue on or not?
No, go ahead. Thank you.
The, for the temporary nature of this, so this is part of what's known as the ARM Mobile Facility. And this is the atmospheric radiation measurements. So when they say radiation, they're talking about solar radiation and things like this, not, not nuclear radiation.
Real quick, would the staff put the site plan up real quick on the monitor?
Go ahead, Mr. Flynn. Sure.
Thank you.
So the, with regards to the site plan, where we're planning on, there's basically a hundred and fifty-foot road coming in off of the street. We're going at one of the existing curb cuts there where there's an existing apron. And then that's going to go a hundred and fifty feet back and then be about, about an eighty by eighty-foot pad where this is going to sit on. The larger square that you see north of that is the cut area where they will be removing material to build the pad up. That way, we have no change in the floodplain issues. With regard to the temporary nature of this, yes, this is a lot of work for a temporary project. But we do what we have to do to get the measurements that we need to do this, this type of research. I mentioned that this is part of the, the ARM Mobile Facility systems. These systems travel the world. And so the one that's coming to us last all, I believe, came out of being on a beach in Arctic Norway for a year. It went through a refurb period, and then it's coming to Houston after this. I believe they told me in late twenty-two or early twenty-three, it's due to be in San Diego for another year-long project. So these are, these normally deploy for a one-year duration, and then they're packed up and they're moved out again. And then they, they've done these things around the world in the Amazon and the Arctic. They've done them on ships. They just finished a project where they took one and put it on an icebreaker and froze it into the, the Arctic ice and let it drift for a year to make measurements. So this installation here in, in our area is absolutely going to be temporary. It's already scheduled, and COVID delays have already started backing that up, so there's not much slop in the timeline at this point. It, it will be leaving, and we will be, if the school district requests it, we will be remediating that field back to the as-found condition.
Ms. Kay, do you guys have any other questions from the planning and zoning?
No, I appreciate the reassurance on that temporary nature. No, no more questions. Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward to council, a couple of questions here that, that have been asked, even in some of the comments that we received online about possible emissions. Does this emit any type of emissions?
It does. It's, it is a microwave radar. However, there is a safety plan in place that's going to limit the elevation angles that it will be scanning down to, so it's not going to scan down low or into the neighborhood. We don't want to do that anyway, because we would get large radar returns off of that. We're looking at the clouds and the precipitation off in the distance. So they're not going to be scanning down low with this. So that, that keeps everything up above where all the other radars are transmitting already. Likewise, they will blank out areas over towards the rec center, because, one, we know there's people there, but two, we also don't want to hit the building and get that massive return back. That would damage the radar. Similar, we're going to blank out an area for the water tower that's over there to the east. So these are things that are very standard and normal for us to do, or for the, the community to do. When they go in and evaluate a site, they look to see where potential hazards are, and then they block out, they, they program and lock out the ability to scan in those areas and those sectors to, to deal with this. As well, because we're only coming in a hundred and fifty feet off and then going on an eighty by eighty pad, we're still over a thousand feet from the fence line of the neighborhood to the north. So there's still a fairly good distance out there. I, I'd also point to the radar up at Hooks Airport is sitting basically on the edge of ninety-nine, where they've cut it through up there, and there's residential areas all around that. But I, I have the utmost confidence that the Department of Energy radar safety teams that do this around the world have a, their plans, a solid plan in place.
As, as far as, I think Ms. Turner also asked about noise. What type of noise does this emit?
Really, air conditioners. That, that's what you might hear. I mean, but there, there's maybe a half dozen mini-split systems that run in this, and that's really all you're going to hear. The only time you might hear more than that really is if there's a big power outage and the utility power goes out to the site. There is a standby generator that will kick on. It's containerized, and so it's embedded and muffled within that, that container.
How did you pick this site?
Confluence of events. We were looking for a large open area that had a good field of view, that did not have a lot of tall structures that would be blocking the radar beams, that had good alignment. The other major sites on this project are up at the Laporte Airport and then down near Needville. And so we have this southwest-northeast line, and this location here in Pearland kind of hits right in the middle. So if we can locate the radar there, we get good coverage over the Houston area. We can see the, the urban area. We can see the bay. We can see out into the Gulf. But we can also see very clearly over the other two sites where research will be taking place. So this kind of is the sweet spot. And as we were looking around, we found that it was school district property. We went and visited with Turner High School, the, the principal over there, and met Larry and Kai, and they expressed an interest that this is something that they were supportive of and their students would be very interested in. So it kind of seemed like it just all came together there and was a, was a good fit overall, so.
I guess this is a question for staff. In here, it says this is a short-term eighteen to twenty-four months. It's been mentioned that this particular unit already is scheduled, you know, beyond this site. As far as the CUP is concerned, can we put a time limit on the CUP? And it expires at, after twenty-four months or whatever the number is?
Mayor, that is something that we could add as a condition to this, this resolution. In discussions with the applicant, we decided not to include that simply due to, you know, their funding and the timelines that they were committed to. But if that would make the, the council and commission at ease, then that can be arranged.
Okay. And then as far as between you and the school district, is there a, is there a ground lease between you and the school district? So?
There's, there's not a lease per se. There's a site access agreement that we've signed.
And does that access agreement require you to put the land back to normal?
It requires us to put it back to normal unless the school district requests that we leave something. So we'll be bringing in significant power, fiber. The, the pad is not insignificant, the road and everything that will be going in. If they decide this is something that's beneficial to them, of course, we'll leave it. But if they decide that they want it to go back to normal, we will tear out everything we've put in and go back and, you know, fill, fill in the hole that we're digging out to make the pad, and we'll put grass seed back down.
Other questions, comments from council? And pardon me, but I think I covered all the questions that were asked by, by Public E. online.
I think, Mayor, did you ask about the lights? We'll have lights on.
Did not.
So can you answer that?
For, for the lights, it would be basically lights like you'd have in your backyard, basically just access lights at the, at the, maybe at the gate or at the door to the, the laboratory buildings that are going to be there. We're not going to have parking lot lights or floodlights or anything like that running on this.
And then there was another question here that says, have any studies been done to provide results of having towers of this nature close to neighborhoods?
So again, I would kind of point maybe towards the Hooks Airport with their radar that's sitting right adjacent to residential areas. But again, this is, the safety plans take care of those things, I believe, as far as limiting the scan angles and the elevation angles that can be scanned, so that we avoid scanning into the neighborhoods themselves.
Can I maybe just ask, what would happen if those safety measures failed and it did scan in the neighborhood? Just worst-case scenario?
Worst-case scenario, I believe you might get some, might interfere with your Wi-Fi. You wouldn't want to be, so you wouldn't want to be real close to it. And, and forgive me, I'm, I'm more an atmospheric chemist. I'm kind of here on behalf of others. The, the distances that we're talking about setting back are safe. They might, if it scanned down into it, the residents might notice maybe some interference on their Wi-Fi routers that are running about the same frequency. But more than that, in the data, we would see massive returns, and they might damage actually the electronics, because they're getting such a strong return back. Remember, these radars are designed to hit snowflakes and raindrops sixty to a hundred kilometers away from the, from the transmitter. And so if we hit a building that was that close, we'd be talking about massive signal that would, we would know right away if, if something had failed and it was dipping down in there, and there would be fail safes, I'm sure, that would, that would shut that down.
You, you mentioned that it would possibly interfere with Wi-Fi, like some device that's running on a similar frequency. So are you saying that there are devices already in people's homes that emit these types of frequencies?
Yes, this is the same frequencies that your Wi-Fi, either your five gigahertz routers and things like this that you brought that are the, kind of the new standard, these are on the same wavelengths.
Okay, so there are already devices?
They're already out there. Yeah.
Okay. I think that covers most of the, the questions now. There were quite a few, so thank you for.
Sure. I realize this is an unusual request.
Member Kamkar, you say you unmuted?
Yes, sir. Professor, I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. I was trying to listen to all the comments, but where is this research going to eventually be published? What's like the timeline on that?
The timeline for the publishing usually with, so the, the data itself that comes off of these projects goes public usually within six months. Now, the publication of the research journals that will be done off of this, I, I've, I'll say they'll probably start within a year, but I can tell you that I've been involved in several major, never on the organizing side, this is my first time on this side of, of the project, but I've been a researcher on these. And there are papers coming out of work that we did in Los Angeles in 2010 that are still coming out. So the, the publication history and, and quite honestly, the mention and, and of Pearland in these papers is going to go on for probably a good decade. There will be several generations of, of masters and PhD students that will do their work on, on the data that we collect here in the coming year.
That's positive. And then you said that there would be interaction with Turner High School in Pearland ISD. What does that interaction look like in regards to our students learning about this?
So right now, it's, I'll say that's evolving, because normally we would have students out and we would come out and visit the radar sites, come through and tour and meet with the instrument mentors. Those are the, the scientists that run and maintain the instrumentation and do some of the data analysis. And we would be going into the schools. Now, with the current COVID situation, that is somewhat skewed. And so we're trying to kind of figure out exactly what that is going to look like. I know I've personally volunteered. We have a couple of mobile laboratories, one of which, well, Baylor University has one that we're working in, that's going to be kind of stationary during this campaign. In September, I'll be running another mobile laboratory that will be driving around, and we've offered to come down and give tours to the students. We can bring it actually out to the high school and show them kind of our.
So generally, this will be a creative to the students. So generally, this will be a creative to the students, locally speaking.
Yes, and we'll connect, we'll try to connect with, say, an environmental science teacher, something like this in the school that we can kind of tie our work into their curriculum for a, a special visit.
Sure. And then one last thing, Pearland ISD is one of the largest landholders in the city of Pearlands. Was this the only place or is there some slight site specific reason why this facility as opposed to one of their large facilities along Highway 35?
This, this site kind of, like I say, hits the sweet spot in addition to being the, the power and the data accessibility, the proximity to outreach opportunities with the school and the sight lines where there are not other cell towers or tall trees, things like this that would obscure in the, in the various directions. We, we.
And the Pearland ISB board has approved this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm restating this, I understand this. So.
Yes.
Safeguards in place, there's a creative research that we will be able to benefit from as a country, the students locally will be able to benefit and the Pearland ISD trustees have approved this site and this operation?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to restate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I just have a couple. Can you give an idea of how many similar towers like this there are across the country?
To this one exactly, there's probably not many others exactly like this. NASA does run one.
Maybe weather radars that put off a comparable amount of RF radiation.
Well, I mean, there's one down in League City. I can't speak off the top of my head to the proximity. I, I know it's in League City, we work with the Weather Service. I've never been out to visit it and I, so I don't know exactly how close they are.
It's on State Highway 96.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, I guess just being very transparent about what I'm trying to get at is, you know, if this is something that there's thousands of these across the country, then I, I think we can pretty clearly say, hey, any kind of tinfoil hat stuff, like let's just move on and approve it. But if this is something that's more limited and it, it sounded like based on where you were saying a lot of these were being put, you were saying, you know, on a isolated Nordic beach or floating on an ice cap. I guess I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, are, are we among the small handful of residential neighborhoods that are going to be in such close proximity to, to something like this?
No, I mean, I mean, these, these, this is a type of weather radar, but as you say, there are lots of weather radars that are scattered throughout the country. So all of the, you watch the evening news and you see the radar, they're all coming in from these various radars. Some of the news stations even have their own radar stations and things like this. I think I saw one off of night or off the Beltway, just west of here a little ways. They're scattered all over. The, the concerns come in if you're within this proximity to them while they're operating. You wouldn't want to do that. But again, the distances that we're talking about, the radar safety plans that are already in place, they've done the, the radiative emittive power studies to see what's within, kind of what they would consider the hazard zone. This is, and I would say that the Department of Energy and, and there's a similar NASA radar that, that was the second radar that was initially alluded to that is right now not on the, on the books. They're very much on the conservative side of where the, to draw the safety line, so.
And, and I think, and you might've said this before, but as everyone knows, it's, it's getting late, but this, I'm glad that there are safety measures being taken, but it, it sounds like what I'm hearing at least, that I didn't pick up on earlier is that the, where it is being set is within the acceptable range. There, there's a distance that is, is set by the federal regulators who have studied, you know, what is the range that we can mitigate?
Yes, yes. And I have the safety plan. I don't have it fresh in my mind right now. They, they've sent me a copy and I'm happy to share that.
Right. But it's not just, hey, we're not going to beam into people's houses. It's that the, where this is geographically set up is within a safe distance.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, that, I think that's what I needed. Appreciate it.
If we attach a expiration date to this of 24 months, is that okay with you?
24 months from today? Yes.
Okay.
Questions, comments?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the CUP request.
We haven't gotten.
Not there yet.
We're not there yet.
Yeah, we'll hold off till we get to.
Keep your powder dry. One second.
Thank you for doing such a good job to help allay some of the fears and concerns.
I do have a question because the, the application does talk about on the whole 61 acres. And so, and I know typically our CUPs aren't site plan specific, but by their own admission, they want to be, go back to the site plan roughly 150 feet off the road, off of Bailey. So.
Mayor, we, we, while we don't hold it to a specific site plan, we do make into consideration their application as part of what they've asked for. And so any serious deviation from their location, we would say would be a violation of their statute.
Because even the homeowners that back up to this tract, I mean, while it, it refers to the whole tract, they're actually, you know, 850 feet away from the actual, you know, apparatus itself and it's only 25 feet high. So.
That's correct.
Wanted to make sure, especially anybody that's listening, if this is passed, that, I mean, your homes are actually, you know, a good distance from the actual apparatus itself.
Looks like about 1,000 feet from what I measured.
Mayor, I'd say that, you know, when we, when we make the resolution, we could add the timeframe and we could say no closer to the houses than currently shown on the site plan as both of those conditions.
I think those would be good. We'll move on to staff wrap up.
Anything in addition?
All right, with that, we'll move to City Council, new business. Member Perez, would you place that on the table? If you want, go ahead and place the other two conditions you just mentioned.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible accident, resolution number R 2021-CUP21-00006 with amendments to create a, a expiration date of the CUP 24 months from the date of approval and a condition that the tower cannot be any closer to homes than what is currently shown on the site plan. So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Kamkar, did that encapsulate what you were going to put on there for amendments?
Yes, sir. I was looking for a mandatory timeline and that, that takes care of it.
Good deal. I see no other questions or comments. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Just to be clear, it was to create a 24 month expiration date from the date of approval and what was the other part?
Site plan.
To include a site plan?
To be no closer than what is currently shown on the site plan.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution R 2021-CUP210006 with the amendment to create a 24 month expiration date from the date issued and to be no closer on the site plan than in the.
Currently shown.
Currently there.
Good deal. Mr. Flynn, thank you for tonight. Thank you for the questions and, and answers. You gave us some really good, really good feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward, joint special meeting number seven, last and final. A request by Christian Pior, wait a minute, my glasses on so I can see. Piorkowski, applicant on behalf of Viberer Marada owner for approval of conditional use permit for liquor package store within the Kingsley and Broadway Plan Unit Development, PUD District to accommodate a liquor retail store within a 1,230 square foot lease space within an existing retail center located on 1.6677 acres of land. Move to the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. With this one, I will introduce Florence to deliver the staff report. Parks?
Thank you, Martin, and thank you, Mayor, planning commission members and city council members. So this request is for a liquor store and it's going to be in strip commercial development along Broadway. This will be within an existing lease space, so the building has already been constructed in a lease space within the building. We haven't received any comments in favor or against the proposed request. So the proposed request, the proposed subject, the subject property is located in the Kingsley and Broadway Plan Development. The blue line shows the 300 foot buffer for all liquor and package stores. And the property is located directly across from the neighborhood Walmart in the Shadow Creek Plan Development. Then to the west, Abbott Gas Station and to the east, some residential homes. And the property to the south is currently under construction and is going to be multi-unit commercial development. The property has an underlying land use of low density residential. The proposed use is not in conformant with the underlying land use, but this is a planned development. So this has been taken care of within the approval of the planned development. So this is an aerial view showing the subject property and the liquor stores close within one mile and two miles of the subject property. As you can see, there are no liquor stores within one mile of the subject property and we do have a few which within one mile and a little, within two miles and a little further than two miles from the subject property. The, the icons indicated in green are the schools that are a little close to the subject property, but again, they are outside of the 300 foot radius from the subject property. So this is a site plan showing the existing developed commercial strip, strip commercial development. It comes with its own parking and it abuts some commercial, some residential homes to the east. So staff has reviewed this according to the criteria for reviewing conditional use applications and meets the, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan. This proposal is within a lease space, so we do not expect any impact to the thoroughfare plan. The property is already planted and has access to utilities. We have also reviewed this according to the criteria established in the Unified Development Code. It does meet the comprehensive plan, the future land use plan, the zone management and the intent of the planned development. We don't expect that it will generate any hazard of traffic. And so based on that, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit as requested. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving forward to an applicant presentation. Is the applicant online?
I am. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Cole and Pearland City Council. My first time ever, ever speaking in front of a, a city council, so I'm nervous, just like Mr. Carlos was. When we first moved to Pearland, you know, I was a, I was an airline pilot and then, then a corporate pilot and then COVID happened and, and we didn't know what to do. I mean, I, you know, as you know, the pilot industry and the aviation, aviation industry isn't, isn't that hot right now. My wife's a teacher here in the Pearland area, so, you know, her job, job is secure, but rather than burn through the 401K, I did my, my research and, and, you know, the first night I lost my job, what did I do? I went to a liquor store to, to, you know, celebrate my early retirement from the aviation industry with my wife and it took 40 minutes round trip because, because of traffic and to get to the liquor stores, to entitle at the liquor store and get back. So we're kind of in a little bit of a liquor store desert here on Kingsley and Broadway. So when I approached my wife with this idea, I was like, let's choose Pearland, it's our home. And then what better way can we get back to the community than to offer jobs to, to people from Pearland and eventually when we do start turning a profit, get back to the community itself. We already, I had a little DJ production company doing Polish festivals and, and, you know, wobble before you gobble. I, I was in, you know, helping out with production and sound for that and we could give back to Pearland a little bit more, I would like to, once we get our, our footing straight and get going forward. How can we add value to the Pearland community? And how is this, this going to be different like Carlos, our applicant before us? How is this going to be different than your, just your typical liquor store? Well, we plan on, on having wine pairing classes because we do have a sampling license. We, we'll have those throughout the week and it's open to the public and, you know, I stole, I stole a guy from Total Wine and he's their wine guru and he's going to be doing our wine classes for us and that's, you know, that, that's a way that we can differentiate ourselves. Another way that we're going to differentiate yourselves is a, we're going to be sponsoring or, or having like promotional toy drives, toy drives for children during the holidays, you know, making the designated spot to, to drop off toys and, and whatnot for those that aren't as fortunate, as fortunate. And another way that we add value is our location is complementary to what's, what is surrounding us. We got a Wingstop to our right, which has an on-premise liquor, or on-premise beer, beer license, but you can't take it to go. And as you know, with the pandemic, everybody's taking everything to go. So if they want beer or wine to accompany their wings, they're going to come to us. We complement Wingstop. To the left of us, we have Jambalaya. It's a Cajun restaurant, like same thing, all their stuff is to go. So if they want to take a bottle of wine to go with their Jambalaya, I mean, we're right there. And then last but not least, we have Walmart right across the street. So people doing their groceries, grocery shopping, they can see the store right across the street. It's very convenient for everybody just to, to come onto the store and get whatever products they need. Not only that, but we've done research to a liquor store, there are four avenues or four avenues of revenue. One of them is the retail store itself. Another one is curbside. Another one is your Drizly's, your Uber Eats and your, there's a third one that we just partnered with DoorDash so they can deliver your alcohol. And then your fourth one, like Carlos said, is your restaurant delivery. We, we already have commitments contingent on the CUP going through. And as soon as this, if the CUP does go through, we start delivering to those restaurants and we can undercut specs because there's TABC law that says we have to sell one liter bottles to everybody for the same price, whether it's specs, Total Wine, or whoever you are, it has to be the same price. And that, and it's only a one liter, one liter bottles and that's what restaurants use, is one liter bottles for all their, for all their mixers. So we can undercut specs and I have a mentor that I've talked to this for a long time now and he kind of told me.
Does that just about wrap up? Does that just about wrap up your presentation?
I got one last thing.
Okay.
Last but not least, with the approval of the CUP, Pearland City Council, Mayor Cole, you'll give me the honor of telephoning all four employees, which are ready to start and tell them that they're going to be on the payroll next week. And I thank you guys for your time and, and thank you for letting me speak this evening.
Thank you. We'll move forward, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. Second person's wishing to speak for or against. And last but not least, persons wishing to speak for or against proposed request. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move to discussion. Planning and zoning commission, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Cole. Commissioners, questions or comments? Commissioner Portis, go ahead.
Just to be clear, this is different from the one we passed. I think it's in the building adjacent. Is that correct?
According to this.
This one's on the, the west side of 288. The other one was on the east side over by Cullen.
I, I don't mean previous to tonight. I'm sorry, about a month ago or two months ago, the same night we saw the one in the Kroger Center, I thought we saw one in, there's two buildings there. I thought it was the building to the west of it. And, and my only comment is. And my only comment is, again, we, you know, I don't know if the gentleman knows, he may have competition there. I don't think that's going to change anything, but it was just a note, so...
Commissioner Fortes, I believe that one was denied, if I remember correctly.
Interesting, okay. Thank you, that's it for me, thanks.
Ms. Cade, anybody else?
You're muted, Commissioner Cade.
I'm sorry, thank you. You said it was, the distance is 300 feet from a school? Because there's, those, some of the schools that are on there look closer than 300 feet and there's a big school right across the street.
The distance, if I recall correctly from TABC rules, is based on property lines. And because this property is set back and distanced away by the, this commercial block, it's separate from the commercial block to the west, which is separate from the gas station. And when you add all of those up, it's greater than the 300-foot minimum. Proximity, they are very close to each other, it's just that it exceeds the minimum TABC requirement from property line to property line.
Okay, it just seems, it seems very, very close. Thank you.
Does that complete the...
We do have a map showing that 300-foot buffer. Martin, if you can take it to the area, the zoning and area marks, the one before this one. Exactly.
Yeah, that's it, thank you, Florence. No further questions, Mayor Cole, I'm sorry, thank you.
Mayor, can I ask the commissioners to just see, get their opinion, yea or nay on this?
No.
Any other commissioners?
Commissioner Fortes, I'd be in favor of it, especially if the other one was denied, unless we denied it for some reason that's similar to this. I don't recall.
Commissioner Earl, I'd be a yes.
Commissioner Boswell? I'd be a yes, if this distance is an issue, then I'd be for it.
Commissioner Eisenberg, no.
Is that it?
Is it all the commissioners?
Yes, that's all that's here tonight.
City Council, any questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll move to staff wrap-up? Can't go back in the agenda.
Sorry, sir, nothing in addition.
All right, moving forward, item number C, City Council New Business. Commissioner, excuse me, Councilmember Orlando, put that on the table, please.
Consideration of Possible Action Resolution R 2020-CUP 20-00027, so moved.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second, any other question or comments?
Mayor, I would just appreciate it if the Planning and Zoning could give more, just direction on yays or nays in the future. I value their opinions, I appreciate that.
All right, seeing none. Madam Secretary, who's call for the vote?
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Let's see, how would I vote? No.
The motion carries six to one to adopt Resolution R 2020-CUP 20-00027.
With that, we'll adjourn these public hearings at 11:05.